I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for March 6th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Hunsy?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a form?
All right, any agenda changes, deletions? Okay, any guest speakers today? All right, this is opportunity for public comment on agenda items only. If anyone in the room would like to speak, you can come to the podium, state your first and last name and where you live. No one at this time? Anyone online with their hand raised, Jamie? Okay, we can move right along to discussion items. 6A Capital Improvement Plan Presentation, it's on page three in your packet. And because I'm online, let me go to that. If you would like to present it to us. Scott, are you gonna take that over or John Moxie, you gonna? All right, that sounds great. Hi, John.
Good to be back with you. Good to see some new faces. Appreciate that. Capital Improvement Planning is just that, it is a plan. Nothing ever goes 100% according to plan, but if you don't have something on paper, we never get anything done. So basically, on an annual basis, we kind of reprioritize the various projects that we know about, things that have come up over the course of a year, and present to this group, here are our ideas. They're really just the ideas on paper for you folks to thumbs up, thumbs down. There's no pride of ownership. There's some science and there's some art that goes into this. We certainly take into account things like the, you know, more objective things like the road ratings and utility needs, things like that. There are some subjective things. What is the local importance of this particular, you know, piece of road or sewer or whatever it is that we're looking at? So after doing all of that, we compile a list of projects, kind of a menu of sorts. And Scott has gonna kind of walk through the things that are already in process that are gonna be finishing up in the next few months and then kind of moving forward into what else are we looking at for this year and kind of a glimpse into next year too. So I might turn it over to Scott. But before I do that, the elephant in the room, the elephant that has been in the room for a few years when we're looking at capital improvements planning is the lead and copper rules from Eagle, where every decision we make is kind of under the understanding of most of the roads in town are gonna get impacted in some way by coming in in the next, you know, between now and 2040 and digging up and replacing lead service lines. So we're always mindful of that when we're setting up what we want to do. We don't want to come in and reconstruct a road and then come back later and say, oh, wait, we gotta dig a hole because there's a lead service line. So as part of every project we do now, we're starting to, let's find the lead service lines, make sure that we're not spending money on top of them. So Scott.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thanks, John. Yeah, but the underground stuff, that's boring. So I get, we get the fun stuff too. We're pretty project heavy for this year. And so when I say for this year, I mean, like this construction year versus fiscal year. So we still have a little bit of work that we are buttoning up from last year. We still have the Park Street erosion issue. We've heard from Steve Kabeckah and Jim Beagle from a former project that we're dealing with. So we've got about 36,000 allocated or budgeted for that project and that agreement. We also are entered into an agreement with the township to resurface Bridge Street. And so that's a 30-70 cost share for that project. So we've got, that will be taking place very soon, I suspect. Communication wise, I reached out to the manager, Daniel DeFranco. He gave me a list of contacts for the township residents and then we'll just have one communication blast for the project for the township and the city. And that's something that I'll work with the DPW Administrative Assistant on. So getting updates from Fleece and Vanderbrink, of course. And then also just, you know, we did Taylor Tack in East West Street and North Maple. There's just a little bit of top dressing and final touches needed for those projects to be completed and everything turned out really well. It was a time crunch. The weather came closing in on us and I think paving came down to like the last couple of days, maybe the last day of last year to meet the bid specs for the asphalt. So yeah, so Bridge Street, we also, so moving forward to this summer, this construction season, we have the DSMI. Basically, we have to take an inventory of all the water service lines in town. That's a state mandated requirement of the city and that's due in October that that has to get done. And that's not cheap. It's like a, you know, possible, potentially up to $200,000 project. But the good news is that we've got some grant funding, we think, for that. So Fleece and Vanderbrink got some communication about it and it sounds like that's gonna be zero expense to the city. So additional, in addition to that, we have some citywide crack ceiling, taking care of, you know, the roads, trying to preserve them a little bit more. We also are gonna be doing all the contracted painting and striping out there. That's 35,000. We are putting some park projects on the CIP this year. And so one of them, this may be a little early to talk about, but I'm just gonna say it because I'm excited about it. It's the Mount Bald Head Restrooms. We really think that it's, it's time. And so we're gonna be recommending that we move forward. Obviously, we'll work out some of the details. We have a basic rendering from F and V. We'll work with PPW Committee on some of the final touches and then I think that information will be presented to the city. But we've budgeted roughly 150,000 for a new bathroom construction and get rid of that old one over there. So maintaining the existing footprint as well. So that's important to us. Or at least, at the very least, if we have to expand the footprint, we do it minimally for several reasons. But, and then also a big one, there's gonna be a little shock factor on this one. The Mount Bald Head Upper Platform, reconstruction of that. You know, that park has so many needs and we gotta start somewhere. And the upper platform is just as good of a place as any in addition to the bathroom. And we're budgeting roughly 300,000 for that. So, but that will be basically reconstructing it in the existing footprint overall, but with modern materials that are gonna last much longer. I mean, modern, the wood is just not lasting very long. So modern lumber isn't anyway. So, and then also buttoning up the, some of the City Hall exterior. We have, we're gonna be connecting the storm gutter system to the catch basin out front and replacing some of the busted up old concrete out there as well. And then once that's done, we'll, we'll be moving into re-landscaping all of City Hall and that'll take care of the exterior of it. And a big part of that cost is gonna be replacing all the irrigation. Because if you noticed, all the trees in between the sidewalk and the, and the street, there's a lot of root systems, like the irrigation's basically been pinched off so many times and patched together from all these tree roots that it's, it's at a point where we pretty much have to start over. Otherwise, it's just kind of a wild goose chase. But, and then Village Square Playground. So we've got, I think most of it's paid for already. We've got about another $75,000 to pay for that project, but it's gonna be rolling out pretty soon, April 15th, Community Build Project. So, and then of course, too, so that puts us at roughly, for all that, about 161,000 for just road projects and then about 570,000 for park projects. But in addition to the 161,000 for those road projects, we also want to do some milling overlay work. We did some, we did about $120,000 worth of milling overlay work last year and it got us pretty far. We really covered some ugly road. And all, you know, the areas that we're focusing on, they have good infrastructure underneath them. So it's not like we're gonna put fresh asphalt down and then rip it up and replace a water main shortly thereafter. So these are areas of town that the utilities are expected to last a long time. It's just that the surface is in poor condition. So we've picked out, John and I, we just did kind of like a driving estimate for what we think some of these areas would cost. And so this is kind of your, it's a loose estimate, but we're shooting for around 200,000 worth of milling overlay work. And that's based off of need. But some of the spots are like Francis Street, that's a, that's a big one from Water to Howland and then also going up the hill from Griffith Howland Street up to Elizabeth Street. It's, it's in really bad shape. And so we think that that's very worthy of the funding. That's just our recommendation. You don't have to follow it, but that's, that's what we believe. And then also Griffith Street from Culver up the hill going to Mary Street. That road's in pretty bad shape too. As well as Mason Street from Grand to Maple and Lucy Street from Butler to Howland. So again, you know, we're throwing a number out of 200,000 for that work. And if that becomes an inaccurate number and we need to scale back, we can certainly do that, but that's at least gonna be the recommendation that we start off with. So there's any questions?
And the roads you just mentioned, you said those are just for pavement overlay. You're not doing any of the lead service lines in those areas. They're just for like kind of surface work, making it look real nice.
Exactly. They're the worst of the worst. And it's, with the exception of Maple Street.
Yeah.
And I can talk about that in a second too. So I just kind of gave you the rundown of, you know, this construction season. Maple Street, we're hoping will be a good candidate for us to pursue next year. Because it's one of those roads that's gonna be torn up in the spring. It's gonna be torn up all summer long and it's gonna be pretty expensive. Somewhere around 2.2 million dollars just for that road. So, but where, as John and I are discussing, these, you know, these rebuilds, like Maple Street doesn't have a sidewalk, right? And there's a lot of apartments down Maple Street. A lot of those kids walk to school. They're passing the darn Public Works guys and their giant equipment that go 40 miles an hour down. And, and so, you know, we're planning on pricing the sidewalk in for that, that road too. And I did learn quite a bit from the Road Commission and the Township about road responsibilities. They schooled me. So basically, it's our road, unfortunately.
So it's not a split with the township then?
That's not really how it works.
Oh, that's.
I thought that would be, I thought that might be, you know, conceptually, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Like, you know, okay, 50-50, you know, residents, why wouldn't it be 50-50 cost?
Well, it's like Cam, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But it's like Campbell, right? That was split with Douglas and because it's habsy-habsy. So what was the?
Douglas actually owns the road. And so for whatever reason, we entered into an agreement to do a cost share for that road.
Because we're nice guys, but the township was like, hey, forget it.
You know, there's probably more to it than that, but basically, that's kind of what we're led to believe at the moment.
And that's not set in stone either. That's, the Road Commission is, Scott connected with the Township. It's, you know, a different entity. We still have the water to talk about participating and to redo the water. So in my mind, that's still.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Russ, did you have something?
Back to your question, the milling overlay work, basically, we're just skimming off the top inch and a half. In some spots where we need to go a little deeper, like a full, you know, three inch depth, we will. But for the most part, it's just milling off, you know, an inch and a half and rolling out new asphalt, you know.
Nice.
John and I completely believe it because I've seen results out there. You know, a lot of places will do like slurry sealing and fog sealing. They're just treat, they're good treatments. They seal up the surface of the road. They just don't last very long. And so, you know, pricing is such that it probably makes more sense economically and from a longevity standpoint, just to do a milling overlay.
Russ, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Good to see you, John. So a couple of questions. One is on the, so I have a total of $306,000 that is yet to be spent this year for the project. That have been, if I correct. The figure you put out was a bit different. As I'm reading this, between roads, water system and the City Hall work. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you?
So as I'm looking at the CIP, looking at fiscal year '23, '24, we're looking at, we have set to spend $45,000 for water system, $140,000 for City Hall, and then for streets and roads, 140,000? Oh, no, excuse me, 221,000.
Do you know what those figures?
Is that right?
Yeah. Little bit apples and oranges. What's within the CIP is kind of reflecting the total cost, what, what out-of-pocket costs. Like on the DSMI, if we get the grant, it's like we're going to that out-of-pocket cost of zero. There's a mix of things in that first fiscal year that are things that are already in motion and things that aren't gonna get started if it proves out.
Okay. And to that point, the Bridge Street project, which is a collaborative project with the township, has agreed to, and in a government agreement, to fund portion of that project. Maple Street has always been a non-starter with the township because it's a county road. So, you know, what, and I don't remember from past experience if the county is even engaged to talk about working with us on the road. I mean, this is probably not at the top of their priority list, I would think, because it's a, you know, it's not a feeder or anything of that nature. So any thoughts on, you know, is there anything we can do? Like when a county commissioner comes, Dean Kapanga comes in, do we ask him about it? Do we, you know, are there ways that we can maybe lobby for support from the county on this?
You're under the impression that that's a county road?
Maple Street, isn't it? Because it's not, it's township, so.
It's a, it's a, it's a city road.
It's all city road? Yeah, okay. So it's all city. So the county will say, no, thanks, we got.
They did, politely. I tried.
Scott tried to.
You gotta chuckle out of my email to Craig Atwood at the Road Commission, so.
It's an all or nothing with roads. It's not split on the center line. It's either this side and this side and that side.
Got it. Yeah, which explains why it's taken so long for us to get anything done out there because of the expense.
The water main, again, is still kind of an open issue with the ongoing discussions of the whole agreement with Cal Lake and the member communities that if we get what I've been pushing for and that these border road facilities are 50-50 split, then it becomes something that we can ask the township to participate in.
If part of the plan, if you guys don't mind, if part of the plan involves a sidewalk and it is on the township's side, could they at least, maybe with discussions on that, be in charge of paying for the sidewalk aspect of it?
We can always ask.
We can always ask. Okay.
Everything is negotiable. Reason that they are participating in Bridge Street is to move it up from wherever we, we're gonna get to it somewhere down the list to get it done this, this year. So, yeah, the whole thing's negotiable. It's, they've got residents there just like we do.
Yeah.
Which is really why we were eager to accept like the 30-70 cost share on that because it's like 30% discount versus zero. So we'll take it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So speaking of sidewalks, when you mentioned some of the specific streets that are gonna be worked on, if you, and Scott, I'm sure is very familiar with this. If you look at the Mary Street steps, if you look at the Francis Street steps, which are actually probably the best ones of them all, then you've got the corner of Griffith and Hoffman. Those steps are beautiful architecturally, but they're falling apart. Then you've got the steps that go down by Twin Gables. So my question is, in these road projects, are those also, because they're sidewalks, are those also incorporated into the project or was the thought processor? Because all of them could use some help. Francis probably not so much, though I would like to see lighting on that because there's so many people that use that and at nighttime, it can be dangerous. The other ones definitely need some attention.
Yeah, in the, in the numbers we were presenting and what we're looking at doing, we were focusing just on the asphalt. It's not going anywhere.
Okay.
That would be a great project to get a concrete company on board to say, hey, these are the areas that are needing some help and do that separately. We're trying to keep it simple, keep the cost down. Because if we include concrete in an asphalt contract, things just got.
Thank you.
But yeah, those are all worthy candidates as well.
That's thought provoking though, because we're, you know, we, John, we could, probably could spend some time, you know, kind of developing like a replacement type of program for our sidewalks versus just, you know, I think currently, Public Works, we just go out and identify trip hazards and unsightliness and then we'll, we'll just, you know, tear out as much as we can fit time-wise in the fall and, and get it, or in the spring and get it patched up. So it would be nice to have a little more of a consistent plan for that.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
When we do a rebuild, like the one that comes to mind most recently is Alleghen Street, the Alleghen Street Hill, we look at it more holistically. When we're looking at how the staff are getting focused on the asphalt is kind of what these projects are just.
Great.
Just, if I could, yeah, on the lead and copper rule and our responsibilities there, I know you, for very good reason, you weren't able to knock out any lead, lead lines this past year. How are you looking for this year on numbers of lines? Because, you know, worst case scenario, if we have 630 lead lines, I hope we don't, that's gonna involve replacing 32 lines a year to maintain the 5% compliance, 37 to get, get it done by 2041. So, you know, hopefully, we'll get a better handle on it in October with what our inventory actually looks like. But, you know, you guys have some lines targeted for this year?
You're exactly right. The first step is knowing where they are so that we can start. What we've been doing is just looking at the lead service lines within the projects that we've been doing and not using that to prioritize.
Okay.
But once we know where they're at, then we can really attack them in a more logical fashion. The other thing is, we're applying again to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund program this year and that includes replacement of all lead lines in town. There are communities that have, you know, just taken that full bite off the apple and just do it all at once. So that, that would be the approach if we get funding.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes. Yeah, John, what is the process to identify lead lines?
Great, great question. It's a few different. One is looking through records, construction records, like, you know, Newgrass. We know we don't have to search anymore. We have the records to prove that those, those are all new. Then the second thing is looking inside the homes, getting eyes. When we did Campbell Road, we had our field folks going inside the homes, checking, you know, what's coming into the house. Is there lead? There are very few that are actually lead, you know, full lines. But galvanized pipe that's coming in is a trigger that is what was done at some point connected to a lead fitting. So those are problematic too. Those have to get replaced. So that would be the second thing. The third thing, what this grant would do for us this year is actually physically potholing, it's called, like with a vacer truck, exposing the service line materials at the curb stop so that we can see. Is it lead? Is it not? We did that on North Park Street before we resurfaced North Park Street. Cal Lake was able to come out and vacuum those for us just because we needed some. And thankfully, there we found that everybody had either replaced them or they were never led to begin.
Hydrovacation is the, is the gold standard because a lot of the goosenecks are lead connected to galvanized and it all needs to come out under the rule, you can't do partial replacements anymore. So, yeah.
So they, one last question. So Councilmember Dean, I think 630 lines, is that the number you?
Worst case scenario, on my count.
Do we know if that number is?
So we submitted what Eagle termed a preliminary distribution system materials inventory a few years ago, which was based on things like just kind of local knowledge and records that we had and things like that. You know, we took the total number of service connections and we started backing off things that we knew about, either one way or the other. And in the middle, there's a giant unknown number. So that's what this grant is intended to do, is to get us to that final version where, okay, now we know where the lead is. We'll take care of it in our, you know, either annually or all at once or however we approach it.
All right.
I mean, statewide, it's somewhere between 400 and 500,000. There's such, there's such a lack of precision given bad record keeping in some of the older properties in the state, so.
Yeah. Cities like Flint and Benton Harbor are well into this because they were kind of the trigger ball of this. They've gotten some pretty substantial grants and things like that to get this going because they're the ones that directly were kind of following behind, you know, just found the final funding to catch up.
Ryan, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, just for the council's radar, you know, as well as you likely recall, back in September or October, you approved an asset management plan for your water system and sent that on to Eagle. And so I think what was, you know, clear from that was that there's obviously a lot of water system funding needs and not currently really a solid dedicated funding source for that. And so you likely recall that Baker Tilly was the consultant that worked on that and recommended an infrastructure charge be added to the water bills to start collecting some funds for future water, you know, infrastructure replacements. And so, well, you know, John and his team are, you know, putting us right back in the hopper for some Eagle funding. You know, we also need to plan for, you know, the case that they, they don't, you know, give us grants and then the work needs to be done. And so, you know, something like, like Maple Street, I mean, you can, you can see the cost down here. And so our neighbors in Douglas had a, you know, went through a very similar process with, with Baker Tilly and their asset management plan and have implemented that charge already. So I suspect soon that you'll probably see staff bringing forth something to you to look at adding that, that infrastructure related fee as recommended by Baker Tilly or at least having a discussion about that so we can start establishing a solid funding source to do this work going forward.
And, you know, prices, prices may come down with efficiencies and economies of scale, but right now, it's about $10,000 to replace one line.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
I just, it's curious, you know, because we've got a lot of like old records so we know there's probably things that, you know, we can't find. You know, you're gonna have to go and search yourself. What, what kind of oversight do we have from the state to make sure that we're compliant? Is there, is there something, how does that work?
We, we have to submit an annual report, which I think Scott was alluding to, to tell them, here's how many service lines we replaced this year.
Right, right.
So we report to them annually. It's, it's basically, we're certifying, when we submit that final DSMI, we're certifying that we went through the process that they outlined. You don't necessarily have to check every service, but you have to do a random sampling of the ones that are unknown. So we're just telling the state, we followed what you said and now we're gonna proceed and.
I was just curious. They're not gonna come and double check and, you know, or any of that kind of thing?
Well.
I'm almost like going by your wording.
Well, no, you know, water systems are required to sample and the sampling, you do something called a 90th percentile calculation. And if you exceed in your 90th percentile, on average, 15 parts per billion, you'll be in a exceedance and that involves a letter that has to go out to all your customers and you have to come up with a plan. You have enough exceedances, your replacement rate accelerates to 7% per year. So, no, no, there is a mechanism to.
For overseeing.
For oversight, yeah. It's, it's, it's collecting samples, you know, first and fifth leader, which shows the presence of a lead service line. So, so yeah, no, there's, there is a mechanism in place for sampling and testing. And yeah, I don't think we want to get in that boat, so.
Good, no, we don't.
For sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, you can see what it does to a water system. You know, people in Flint still, you know, don't trust their water. And, you know, in a town like this, if people don't trust their water, it's, it could be a, could be a big problem.
Sure.
Okay.
Final thought, some communities formally adopt their capital improvements plan. We haven't historically done that. It's been more of an informal kind of communication tool. It's constantly changing, so the minute you adopted it, it could be out of date. What we're looking for today is just kind of a nod around the table. Does what we presented in terms of the projects make sense to this group? Then they'll come back to you for formal approval, you know, individually as, as we look to kick those off. It's really just, we're looking for some feedback today more than anything.
Yeah, I feel I'm giving you a nod. So there's that. How about everyone else?
Ad from me.
Yeah.
Yeah, a nod, yes. Thank you for the effort here. I just want to confirm, you've talked with the treasurer regarding the financial, the financial impacts of these projects and the overall scheme. Some of this is unknown, obviously, and we want to make sure we plan for the worst and hope for the best on some of the financial aspects of these big projects.
Yeah, so this, this aligns well with the village money that's coming in the door for the road portions of the project and actually helps to set aside a little bit for the future knowing that there are some big needs coming up, you know, in the Maple Street, Elizabeth Streets, Park Street. Those things are definitely on the radar for future years.
Good, great work. Thank you.
And the funds going, you know, to the park projects could potentially get sourced from the general fund and there's sufficient funding in there.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 6B. This is a resolution to support the short-term rental house bill 5438. And Ryan Cummins, if you could take that?
Sure, Madam Mayor. So your, your local state representative, Joey Andrews, has been working over the last year on a short-term rental bill. He held some kind of community engagement and listening sessions last year and I think some of you attended. So he's since put that, that legislation forward in the, in the State House. And just in, you know, very brief summary, essentially, it would create a statewide short-term reg, short-term rental registry system that would allow for the state to collect an excise tax on short-term rentals and then return a lot of those funds directly back to the community in proportion to the number of short-term rental units that you actually have. And it would outline a process for certain like safety measures that had to be taken in short-term rental units and then really kind of outlines that, that local governments still have the ability to, to, to regulate short-term rentals and, and, you know, limit areas that they can be and numbers that, that you can have and that sort of thing. So his staff have, you know, drafted kind of a letter to, for folks that are interested in, in submitting support for the bill. And so we put that in a draft resolution format. And if you have a desire to speak as an entire body, you could approve a resolution supporting his bill as drafted. You can make modifications to the proposed resolution or you could choose to not take action as an entire body and submit individual letters if you, if you wanted to go that route as well.
So basically, I, you know, what I would like to know from all of you, if you've all had a chance to read, read through the resolution and read through the House bill, you know, your thoughts on whether as a council, we would like to, you know, have a resolution in support of it? Or if you would prefer, if we don't have, you know, a majority here, whether you would like to just submit letters individually. So I'm just looking to find out if we would, you know, have council support for a citywide support.
Madam Mayor, I absolutely support this bill and there's two big things in here. One, it still provides local control for the individual municipalities, the ones that the previous administration was trying to put through is going to create a statewide control. And I can't see any reason why Sagatuck and Sterling Heights would have the same um, short term rental regulations. It doesn't make any sense. So we retain local control and the excise tax really puts us above. So the, I'm sure everybody here has already read the bill. There'd be six percent, the state would keep one as a measure of administrating it. We get five percent of short term rental revenue, which I think I can't imagine anyone, any reason why we shouldn't be receiving that. We provide roads, parks, all the things that we provide. And that would take us a long way toward putting it in it really at a market level. Why shouldn't they pay the same thing as our Airbnb? Or I'm sorry, is there our bed and breakfast, any hotels or whatever? When you check out of a hotel, you get a bill, you're like, oh, it's four hundred dollars a night and you get it and you're like, oh, I stayed two nights, but it's a thousand dollars. Because you've got taxes and fees and I don't see any reason why these businesses that are running here shouldn't pay the same. I advocate for this and I'm going to support it whether we do it as a council or I do it individually. I have planned to actually attend the hearing.
Okay, go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, I heard Rep. Andrews talk about this at the Douglas Library. I know Ryan was there. He's really worked across both parties and spent a lot of time, you know, out in the communities and including ones like this. A number of their ideas did come from beach town tourist places. I know Traverse City was talking about, you know, the possibility of using some of these this revenue to help support seasonal housing. So, yeah, I also support it. I like, I think it it protects on the kind of on both ends. So cities get control. You can't ban, you can't do anything that would ban short term rentals, which I think is really important, too. So I'm supportive of it. I support it personally and would support it as part of city council.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have to study this a little further before I'm willing to. I don't know where I stand on this particular legislation. I'd also be curious as to what Joey's position is on how this may even make it through the legislature. I don't know what the success rate might be on this. Certain aspects of it I like, but there's other ones. It seems to perpetuate a notion that short term rentals are a bad thing. And I'm not necessarily sure that they are. I don't think that was the intent of this, but I still have to study this. I'm not prepared to support it from a city council standpoint. I still have to evaluate this personally.
Okay, around the table, anyone?
Yeah, I'd be willing to support this. It it seems to be in keeping with what we've just done as a council. And it also would seem to, in my mind, create a bit of a level playing field among all these beachfront communities, which I think would be actually in the to the benefit of people operating short term rentals if it's something that's across the board. So I would support it as a council.
Gregory?
I still have to read through the bill itself.
That's fine.
I mean, if I, right, right away, I think I'm supportive of it. But I think I'd like to engage some of the folks in towns that that would be affected by this or, you know, folks in the industry and see what they have to say about the bill as well as spend more time looking at the bill itself. I want to thank Ryan for giving us those highlights. But I really haven't had time to go through this bill as we got the package yesterday afternoon.
Sure, that's fine. Logan?
I don't have a strong opinion on this, but I lean towards being excited that we could recoup some of that money that is being spent in our community that doesn't touch our, you know, that is a heavy use on all of our systems. I think it's only fair that part of that money goes to support those systems. So seems seems right to me.
And as far as my opinion, I just want to see some equity between what hotels are allowed to tax and what our short term rentals are allowed to tax because it feels like it's the same thing. So I just want some equity there, you know, so what you're paying for a hotel room can have at least some of the same things that a short term rental would be expected to pay into a community. Go ahead.
I absolutely agree with you just with what you just said. And of course, protecting us as being able to police our own units while having that protection. Those are the selling points for me. So I'm probably like seventy five percent yes. I just need a couple days to read through this and ask a couple folks in the community that might be affected by.
Yeah, and speaking of which, Representative from Andrew's office, is there someone we can speak to directly if we had some direct questions?
Yeah, absolutely. I can I can send out this staffer's contact information.
Yeah, that would be great, because I feel like there's some specific things I would love to ask.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay.
Right. Her name's Rachel Furman and she's been here a couple times to speak with us, super, super responsive and smart. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. So from what I'm hearing from you, that you would like it on the agenda from Monday and then we can at least vote on Monday whether as a council we would support it. Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next step.
That could be.
Yeah, sure.
Jamie, is there like, I'm hearing like a.
Yes.
Or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's a phone.
It's mine. I'll get off with Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's if there's nothing else on that.
I'm humming, Brian.
Okay, yeah, please do, please do.
I think I saw in the STR stuff, the average income like on a full time STR was something like fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year.
That seems about right.
Got on the low end, two hundred homes, on the very low end, the lowest calculations I think I've seen of two hundred.
Yeah.
We're taking five percent of that. So six pound minus one, that's six hundred grand a year.
I love math.
To the city.
And we just talked about how we need five hundred thousand dollars for Mount Bald Head.
Yes.
And yeah, it's really, it's it's something to consider. Yeah.
And and if you replace thirty two lead lines.
Right, exactly.
A year, that's three hundred and twenty thousand.
And everybody's using all these. I mean, it really, and it just puts you at parity.
And it's fair use.
It's really, if you put you at parity with the Airbnb or with the bed and breakfast and the hotels, that just there's no reason why anybody who's staying at a short term rental shouldn't pay a tax to do so. It's lodging.
I like it. All right. Thank you all. We will move on then to discussion item number six C, city manager search options. So this is page twenty. You can see the cover page there. I reached out to Frank Walsh with Walsh Municipal Services and had a discussion with him. Walsh Municipal Services helped us in previous city manager searches as well as our planning and zoning administrative searches. And because of that, Frank Walsh is on the line right now. And I wanted him to be able to be here and join us and answer any questions that you may have. You can go through, if you want to move on to, and I'll have Frank, you know, go over his proposal. But one of the things, you know, I want to have you look through is what scope, you know, his firm would be looking to help us with. And the fact of the matter is because he's already done this for us, it's a bit of a discount than if we were to go with another firm. So that's why I reached out to Frank because of that reason. He already has a, you know, a lengthy profile on the city of Sagatuck and all of our needs because he did it not that long ago. So if anyone has any questions for Frank or if Frank you would like to just introduce yourself to our new council members, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is Frank Walsh. And, you know, our firm's been doing recruitment in Michigan for about twenty seven years. And we did the city manager search for Sagatuck in twenty twenty and the planning and zoning position just about a year and a half ago, I think, August, maybe of twenty twenty two, maybe. And we do have a profile. The profile does need some work. It's a profile that's coming up not too long, on four years ago. And I've been looking through it. It's going to need quite a bit of work. Our usual fee is around is twelve thousand eight hundred. That's what we charged in twenty twenty. Our department head fee is ten thousand. We offer this fee, basically if you want to do a very expedited typical recruitment period is about four weeks. And this recruitment period that we've offered here, a very expedited, this is an at cost proposal. I've never done a recruitment at this cost before, but, you know, you've been a client that we've had twice now. So if you want to go this route, we can do a very expedited recruitment of about two weeks. If you wish to to broaden that out, we can talk about that. But I'm here just to listen and learn from you about what you want to see in the recruitment and how we how we might be able to assist you in doing that. So, yeah, that's a bit of an introduction.
Yeah, and if you all wanted to look down to page thirty, it does go through a timeline. And, you know, and then throughout, if you go up further, you can look at the scope of services, how Walsh Municipal Services plans to, you know, list it with the Michigan Municipal League, both in print, online, social media, a number of different ways, word of mouth, LinkedIn, varying ways of getting the word out about the city manager position. But if you have any questions, please feel free to take it from here.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Logan.
I'm Logan White. A question for you on the recruitment period. I know you mentioned the normal one is about four weeks. I imagine that there's a, you know, a rush of applications or, you know, a high and a low of applications, just, you know, a guesstimate. What kind of, what happens to the numbers of applicants? If you double the recruitment period to the normal recruitment period, is it is it an even split fifty fifty? Or is it like, well, we only could really get fifteen percent more? Just out of curiosity, what have you seen in your experience?
Yeah, the number of applicants that you would have would probably double. It would at least double if you went to the four week normal period. I've never, I have not done a two week recruitment period before. Because typically when it comes out, people, you you think there's a rush at the beginning and there's really not. The rush is in the three and a half to four week period. That's when we get, believe it or not, if I, on a four week period recruitment period, you get fifty to sixty percent of your applicants in the last week and a half. Usually week one is decent and week two and three are slower. But the end of the third week, it definitely into the fourth week, it really, really picks up. I I wish I had more data on what a two week recruitment would look like. I just don't. Just no experience with them, but strong majority of your candidates are in the last week and a half of a recruitment.
Really interesting. Thank you.
Do you think some of that might be deadline driven as a deadline driven person myself?
Yeah, yeah, it could be. I just wonder. The only concern I have with a shortened period is that you have spring break coming up and all of that. And does it get the full attention that it deserves? But I'm willing to try anything that the city council would like to do.
Does the M M L site, I know I looked at it today, but what I forgot to look at is if you can sign up for alerts so that, like, you know, on LinkedIn, you know, they push you notices when there are jobs that you might be a fit for. Does the M M L site do that? Do you know?
I don't know if it does or not. I've not had anyone. I I don't think it offers that. I've not heard anyone tell me that they've used that before. But we probably would get about thirty percent of our candidates from the M M L site, but it would be several others that we use that we would get a number of candidates as well. And we've had a lot of success with without a state candidate. We just placed a a young lady out of Florida into a community over in Hillsdale County. So we go beyond Michigan as well. And then again, if we're going to expand the recruitment beyond Michigan, I don't know that two weeks, you know, would be allow us to do that.
Um, go ahead. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I, so this is the first time, Frank, you've ever done a two week recruitment period, right? You've never done that before? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I had a question about April eighth, two thousand twenty four as a candidate interviews and then candidate selection. So this timeline says that we would be selecting on the same day that we would be doing interviews?
That's only because it's impossible to pick a second. So to answer your question directly, totally up to you. When you interview on that first day, a lot of communities will have second interviews. There's a bunch of ways to do that. I just kind of leave it open ended about where you go from there. Not, I I am not by any way suggesting that, yes, let's make a decision on the eighth. There's a lot of ways to do that.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
You bet.
Anyone else with questions? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Walsh. Again, thank you for your information earlier today when I contacted you. This this process is very well understood. I appreciate the presentation, the information. It's it's very helpful. What I struggle with is that we've been given an opportunity by the former mayor's or former manager's resignation to stop for a moment. Because I think what we need to do, and I sent a roadmap proposal out to the council today just for suggestion. One of the things I think that we should do first is we should spend a few minutes and more than a few minutes and actually evaluate our current city manager job description. And also look at our department head job descriptions to make sure that's a well aligned with what we expect from those positions for the city. And then two is get feedback from staff on where we may have some gaps. What I'm very curious about is to make sure that we have in place very well understood what we're looking for from a new city manager. And I don't feel a rush. We've got a, we've got a wonderful city manager, an intercity manager, Ryan Cummins. He's done a fantastic job picking up where we've asked him to. So I don't feel a rush to get this moving quickly. I think there's some things we need to do housekeeping wise as a council in the city before we jump into this process. It feels a little rushed to me personally, and I think we have some things that I personally feel we should do. It's a great opportunity that we're in where we've got a wonderful intercity manager, department heads are doing their work. And we don't have a big gap at the moment, but we want to do this right. We want to make sure that we source the correct candidates, that we have good people to select from, internal and external, to make sure that we hire right, that we set our teams up for success on this process and we set up the manager correctly in the role for success going forward.
Yeah, and I'm, I hear you and I'm more than willing to be flexible, however, the majority of the council wants to move forward. Just yeah, just so everyone understands that if we go to a more typical recruitment period that is four weeks and we spend all the extra time doing that, which is what we normally do, the the fee would be different. And I just want everybody to understand that, that what what you have before you is an at cost, no profit. Let's just get this, you know, rolling, couple weeks, see who applies. If you want to go to a more traditional, take some time and go to a more traditional one, we still give you a discount. I would still want to give you a discount because we do have the bones of a recruitment profile in front of us, in front of me. But it does need some work to it. So like I said, I'm I'm open to the direction of the council at this point.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, thank you very much. I, you know, this is a, this is the type of opportunity, as I'm going to call it, that costs are important, but I think the bigger driver for me is to make sure it's done right for our staff, for our citizens, and more importantly, for our council. So we have everything that we have in place. So when we hire this manager, that we are ready to go. That person doesn't have to do a lot of work on some of these items and they're set up and they're running once they hit the door.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Holly.
I, you know, I have a contrary point of view or at least a counterpoint on the, I mean, I think we definitely want to consider, you know, talk to staff and get a sense. I would have to think that it, you know, it's not like we're starting from scratch since we just did this a few years ago. I mean, definitely want to be sure everything's current. But in terms of kind of redefining the different roles, I would want our new city manager to be part of that because they're going to be leading this team. I mean, we want to know what the team sees as the needs, but in terms of really pinning that down, I I wouldn't want to hamstring a new manager with what we thought, because I think they would bring their own point of view that we would want to consider and we would want to give him or her the freedom to, you know, with working with staff, make those decisions.
Okay, Russ?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Has everybody on council actually read the job description of the city manager? Everybody have it? I think there are some adjustments that need to be made to it based on my experience with the city, and I would suggest that we do that. The department heads, which report to the manager. I can certainly agree with Councilmember Anderson, that might be something we want to ask the manager to make a priority. It's the council's responsibility to make sure that the process for evaluations, performance, everything else is built correctly before we hire the manager. And I think that's responsible.
Anyone else?
That's our responsibility.
Appreciate everything you're doing. I'd like to move fairly quickly on this. I'm okay with Mr. Walsh increasing this search period to a more traditional four week period. But apart from that, I'd like to get moving on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gregory?
I'd like to agree.
I'm sorry.
I I agree with Scott in the in the in the in the manner that I would like a four week recruitment period. I I just think, you know, it's been, but how long? Three, four years now? And we just haven't found the right fit for Sagatuck. And so I I would I would support a four week recruitment period.
Helen?
Madam Mary, I would agree with Councilman Dean and Muncie. To go more traditional, to think about the holiday that we we'd be bridging is good. To that end, though, I think that we need to be mindful of the fact that while everything has been running very smoothly, that we've been just putting it all in the back of exactly one gentleman here. And if he's going to need some help from an outside planning firm or something while he continues to work here, I'm not comfortable with expecting our acting in or manager, our active manager, to just bear the burden of everything that we're doing all week. For like, we better fart around and and do our our due diligence and I'm good with it. I like taking the four weeks, but we can't continue to abuse Ryan in that in that case.
My proposal would be to, before the next council meeting, get an update on the price. My proposal would be to, before the next council meeting, get an update on the price from, from Mr. Walsh for four weeks. And I'll be prepared to vote on it.
So I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of giving it more time and I can get a new proposal from Mr. Walsh, which I actually got an original proposal from him. So I do have, you know, and he can, you know, explain, you know, what that looks like. Jake, would we have to if we, do we need to have more bids if it's over a certain amount?
There is. The city code has an exception to the competitive bidding process for professional services. This is textbook example of professional services. So no competitive bidding is required.
Okay. You know, as, you know, my opinion, I, I would like to keep with Walsh Municipal Services because of the background that he has. I'm in favor of him updating if we needed to look at the profile and having Frank update those things for us. If there's any additional items that needed to be updated, we can certainly do that. And I can work with Mr. Walsh on having a new proposal for Monday that would create more of a four week traditional search to give us, you know, more time.
And, you know, Mayor, I'm, I'm going to be guided by our, our charter on this. In our charter, section six point two, city manager, part A, it says manager shall be selected by the council on the basis of training and ability alone. And I'm going to stick to the charter on this one.
Great.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just one last comment on this. The, the community profile, which Mr. Walsh alluded to, does include a, at least one page that includes, I didn't count the bullet points of the things that the council and the city would be looking for as priorities for the new manager. So that would be something I would suggest the council would discuss together as a group. I would also discuss together what characteristics and type of abilities do we want this person to have in terms of fit for the city to Councilmember Muncie's comment. This is a great opportunity for us to set some things right and to do it correctly for the respect of our staff and for our community and for our council.
Frank, do you have any questions for us as far as that's concerned? I know I can, I can work with you on making sure we have a proposal to go in front of council on Monday. Is there anything more direction you need from us?
I don't think so. I think we'll revert back to the first proposal I sent you, which is still quite a bit less than our normal fee. And we, we were basing that off of, there will be less work to do. But as I look at this profile, there's a lot more work that needs to be done with us than what I originally thought. Like, for instance, the opportunities and challenges page, which I would need to work with Mr. Cummings on and staff. Because the opportunities and challenges that were here four years ago may not be the same ones today. So there's, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be completed with a profile and I'll work with you on that and the council. And we'll get this right and maybe with a goal of being able to march forward within two weeks to post this position and give us some time to get the profile right.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And I have a lot of respect and confidence in Mr. Walsh. I mean, I'll just hearken back to when we were searching for our planner. And Mr. Cummings came before us and he didn't fit the mold. In fact, a lot of people said he didn't fit the mold of a planner. But I think we're all thanking our lucky star. That he didn't meet a bunch of bullet points and we actually met him, saw the talent potential and the ability for us to have a really solid backup on our team, which is serving us very well right now. So once again, I, I thank Frank for finding Ryan and look forward to what he can come up with for us.
Okay, go ahead, Logan.
Just one thing, very interested in the extended recruitment period. I feel a sense of urgency around this. Again, want to make sure we do it right. I would just be looking to Mr. Walsh to let us know if there's anything else we can do in partnership with you to make sure that we're presenting together the city of Sagatuck in the best light and the best, putting our best foot forward to, to attract the highest quality candidates. So open to, you know, under, under a reasonable timeline, trying to make sure that we, we are coming to bat with everything we need here.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Holly.
Just one general principle. I mean, we, we want to get the best candidate for the job. You know, all things being equal, I love it when we can give job and career opportunities for our existing staff, all of them. So, you know, I think we're, we have a great staff here and, you know, so thank you to the great staff. And I hope we can provide everybody with opportunities to grow and develop. And occasionally bring new people in, but.
Anything else? Frank, thanks so much for joining us and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item six E, SDR enforcement fees. It's on page thirty seven. I'm sorry, I'm D. Thank you. Oh, we were going to skip that. Sorry, Ryan.
Sorry. Anything into that.
If we could go to six D.
Back to my original comment.
Jamie, thank you so much. Okay, so obviously, Mr. Cummins has been serving as both the Director of Planning and Zoning and as our interim city manager since February second, doing an incredible job at both. Ryan and I meet at least weekly, if not a lot more than that. And honestly, it's just been a really fantastic experience. And I am asking if council would be willing to have a stipend amount that will be per, per week in addition to his regular salary while he is doing both jobs. Any comments on that?
Any, how do you put a dollar amount on that? That's, you know, I, I see it's blank in the motion here. Well, again, it, it's hard to figure out what that amount would be.
I guess I, I would, I mean, yes, and I would say he's doing the city manager's job. So what, what were we paying the city manager?
I would say it would be equal to what our city manager was making, even though he's doing two jobs. So if we could at least get him an extra thousand dollars a week, I'm guessing.
I would, I would support that.
Yeah.
When I, when I was working with you on this, the amount that I came in, one thing that I'd like to make sure is that we also, I would obviously take it retroactive. And up until the point that, you know, that we've got this, a thousand dollars, it just seemed like, it seemed like a good number that we, it could get us. I mean, there's going to be at least ten weeks here because it's already been, you know, we're going into two months by the time we get this done or whatever. So I can see us getting, I mean, I think, I just felt like ten thousand was a good most. And it's not even so much about doing their job. I thought a thousand dollars a week is a fifty thousand dollar ish bump for a year, right? And that would only be like another quarter of what we're talking about for somebody doing two jobs. So if this search goes on or whatever and we, and we hire a part time planner or something to give him some relief, then we can augment that. But to my mind, I think that we'd be getting off easy at a thousand dollars a week.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Ryan. I know you've, you've been working really hard and all that and, but I just want to make sure that you're capable. You know, I, you know, I know you have been. I'm not saying I haven't seen an example. I just want to make sure that this is something that you can take on. These are two really big jobs. So if you feel comfortable, of course, you know, with, with or without compensation, how's it going? I don't know. You've been working with them. Maybe you have Scott a little bit and you have, I haven't been. So I'm just wondering, how's it going?
Well, you know, certainly taking on, on two rules is a lot. So, you know, and then some of it's, you know, taking on a, a second role as the city manager and getting up to speed on a lot of the things that were, were being worked on. But at the same time, I appreciate the trust and, and the opportunity. And there's a lot that I'm learning certainly as well, you know, along the way. So I, I think certainly the last couple of weeks, we had, you know, short term rental on steroids, right? With, with everything kind of coming to a head with that. So that, that added a lot of maybe additional extra that's maybe not, not normally there. You know, permits stay, you know, steady throughout the year. We're, we're certainly going to increase, you know, the number of probably inquiries or maybe complaints that we're receiving and things like that over the next several weeks as more folks kind of return to town. So I, 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 obviously I'm relying, you know, on our, our, our staff to, to, to assist in and with, with certain things and, and carrying, you know, the lift along the way to and our, our engineer and our, but I, I have been relying on, on David Jurassic, our, our planning consultant a lot. And, and certainly our, our legal team too, as, as various issues have come up. So I, I did tell the mayor that if I felt that, you know, it was too much or I couldn't handle both or, you know, that, that I would certainly approach her and have that discussion because I, I want to make sure that you guys are getting absolutely what, what you need done. So.
Do you foresee having to have like an assistant, like, like Ms. Baldwin said, or? In the end, see that or you can't proceed that right now?
Are you asking?
So, if I may, Mayor, I mean, and I'm glad we've got councilor. It feels like we're skirting very close to a closed session personnel matter. I just want to put that out there because I'm getting a bit uncomfortable. You know, it's, it's almost like we're doing a job interview and what your, what your, what your intentions are down the road kind of conversation. It's making me a bit uneasy.
Jake, if you want to, yeah, go ahead.
Council wanted to have a closed session to discuss these matters, it would be able to.
Okay.
Some of these conversations might be better to have, you know, on a one on one basis or in closed sessions.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. And, you know, just to reiterate what Ryan had said, we, we did have a long discussion about if he needed extra help as he's doing planning and zoning and taking on the city manager role. And we, you know, as, you know, we're in these situations, onboarding new people is also really time consuming and sometimes takes away from your job. So he said if he needed any extra help, he would certainly reach out to me. But the whole onboarding process and trying to get everyone up to speed on our short term rental situation would be maybe even more cumbersome. So he said he's, he's good for now, but I am aware if he needs any additional resources.
Okay, I didn't mean to get personal.
It's okay. No, it's okay.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Right. I think, I think you're doing a great job right now.
Great, great. Holly, anything?
Yeah, again, I mean, we're in a really competitive job market and these, you know, our city staff, those are very specialized jobs. You know, we need people who know how to work those jobs. And I think the more we can do to, you know, support all of our staff. I mean, you know, the clerks have just been through a hectic time. Just, you know, we want Sagatuck to be the best place to work. And I think being mindful when we ask somebody to do a pretty heavy lift, you know, recognizing that with additional compensation makes great sense to me.
All right. So is there a number that we're looking at as far as a weekly number?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Ryan, thank you. I appreciate the fact that you've had to step up willingly and capably. Thank you very much. Two things I struggle with on this. One is that there's no science behind the number. There's nothing that we can use as a statistical guide on this. A thousand dollars per week was more than I was envisioning. You know, to be open, Ryan's position is currently at ninety four thousand dollar base. In the city manager, I believe the position was at one fifteen, if I recall correctly. So there's not a lot of gap between the two and this thousand dollars would move it really close. As a matter of fact, maybe even surpass it.
But he's doing two jobs.
We have to be careful. We have to be careful because there are wages, there are salary scales and so forth that we need to be aware of to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a financial position that's going to be difficult to sustain. The other thing too, that's kind of difficult for me is that our previous city manager, I think, has moved a lot of responsibilities on to our department heads. And should we be discussing maybe some bumps for them during an interim period while that all gets straightened out? That makes sense what I'm saying?
Not really. I, I mean, you know, he's doing the job of, of two staff members at a particularly consequential time in the city's history. I, I think a thousand dollars is eminently fair. And, you know, I don't see any way, why, reason why we wouldn't do that, just as, as a demonstration of our faith in what Ryan's doing. And once again, this is a bit uncomfortable doing it in this way, you know, in, in open session like this. But if I have to, I'm, you know, I think you know how I feel. I think, I think he's. Sorry, man, you're well.
If I may say also, it's not compensation, it's not wages, it is a stipend and recognition for the fact that the very unique situation. And, and I just don't see any reason to be cheap at this point.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Logan.
Working in a company, a lot of times you have to do someone else's job sometimes, just kind of how things go. So I'd like to put that out there. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't recognize, you know, that a little bit. And closing the gap between those two numbers feels really appropriate.
Okay.
I just, my head math says that that's less than a thousand dollars a week, but whatever that, whatever that ends up being, I don't think that's, that's a huge issue.
Okay. Well, we can move on from this, but if you have individual ideas that you want to send my way and then we can put it forward on Monday, I think that would be fair. Okay, great. All right, Jake, thank you. Okay, all right, moving on. Item six E, SDR enforcement fees and fines, page thirty seven, Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and so at your, your regular meeting last Thursday, you had a heavy lift, right? You had a lot of discussion about short term rentals and, and the culmination of, of many months of, of work by, by several folks kind of, kind of came before you and, and you voted and, and created a short term rental police powers ordinance. You updated your zoning ordinance and then updated your noise ordinance as well. And so as part of that short term rental task force process, they, they recommended certainly that enforcement needed to be, you know, a part of any future plans, right? Why, why create updated regulations if you're, if you're not going to enforce them? And I, and certainly I heard that from you as a council as well, that you wanted a, a short term rental enforcement plan going forward, as well as some recommendations on, on fees for new licenses and encompassing our costs. And so I summarized in your, your packet kind of some of the, the, the short terminal task force recommendations that related to enforcement. That included kind of more proactive monitoring, informational campaigns, certainly continuing to use our sheriff's office, putting information on our website to do some proactive education. And then looking at having, you know, a public database, looking at evaluating a call in line option, looking at third party agency to support the city's short term rental enforcement efforts. Certainly increasing our monetary fines and fees is appropriate. And then there was one I actually forgot to include in here that included looking at parking signage in areas where there were narrower streets and, and looking at no parking signage on one side of the street to help emergency vehicles have, have access. So, so before you is a, a plan that I, I think meets those recommendations and maybe even some additional things in here as well. So just kind of going through it. You know, tools, really, it's going to be, you know, multiple tools in the toolbox. City staff is still going to have a parts and enforcement and, and a part of this, this process from, you know, evaluating applications, updating websites and then being involved in some of the enforcement processes. Your fire department is still very key part in doing those annual safety inspections and actually getting in on sites and making sure that, that each rental is, is safe from a fire safety perspective and, and is, you know, kind of has the, the, the extra, you know, posted information that they're required to have. Sheriff's office still very, again, very key piece, you know, they're going to be there for those more serious disturbances, those more active noise complaints that are going on for a more real time response and, and other issues that, that need more immediate attention. And then we'll, we'll, we'll talk about some part time or contracted code enforcement and then third party support. So on the proactive front, again, on the safety end of things, we had the, the fire department handling those inspections. And then your city engineer, this past fall, I believe it was, kind of prepared a report and, and some recommendations on streets that may need some no parking signage on one side or the other. And so assuming you're fine with this plan, we'll, we'll continue to work towards kind of finalizing that and bringing some recommendations to you on that. Recommending to you that you engage with a, some third party support through a firm called Granicus that really has a variety of tools. There's a couple of different tools that I'm, I'm bringing forth as a recommendation at this point in time, although they do have additional options that we could look at at a later date. But essentially they, they have the ability to, to scan multiple sites and really create a comprehensive list of short term rentals. I mean, before we were having staff go, you know, on a site, look at listing by listing, trying to figure out what address it was because you, you can't always tell the address. You, you, it doesn't have pictures of the outside. And so you're trying to guess where a particular rental unit was and trying to see, okay, well, is this being rented properly? This does all that work for you. Plus it has the ability to actually look at, you know, how are they renting it? How many times are they renting it? Aggregates all that data in one place. It would be a really excellent tool to, for us to have. This would also help us analyze whether accessory dwelling units are being rented, you know, under a single contract as our ordinance requires. It's going to regularly update those lists for us. So, you know, Granicus, I think you probably saw in their proposals, you know, felt that we had four hundred. So, you know, Granicus, I think you probably saw in their proposals, you know, felt that we had 400 and some, you know, short-term rental units in the city. Well, we have, you know, 275 and 300 that are registered in the city. So some of those I think are unregistered. I think there's some others that we have some like data cleanup to look at, like how are they defining short-term rental versus how do we define one? And making sure that we're narrowing that down properly, but that's going to help us take a look at violators there. And it's also going to help us identify, I think, where we have high concentrations of short-term rentals. And so there's, you know, there are some questions at your previous meeting about, well, Hoffin is a particular short-term rental, even renting. And so this will tell us, okay, well, maybe it's only rented a couple of times a year versus, okay, this is something that has frequent and regular rentals on a regular basis and maybe has more of an intense use. We can kind of get an idea of where those are at throughout the city. On the complaint side of things, Granicus offers a 24/7 hotline option that essentially somebody can reach out to them via email, text. They can text a picture, text a video, they can call them. So they'll actually gather the evidence as well and take the complaint. And then they'll reach out to the rental agent and via email or text and say, hey, we received this complaint. And then the agent's able to communicate directly and identify, okay, yep, I went out. Hopefully within that two-hour timeline that your new ordinance requires, we can track their responsiveness, but then track what the outcome was. Yep, I talked with them, we took care of this issue, the trash isn't on, you know, at the side of the street anymore. And then we're able to get a log of those complaints and the, you know, what the complaint was and then the response, what the response time was. Certainly, we're going to still use the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department for those more immediate needs, as I alluded to. We'll work with the sheriff's office to make sure that they're up to date on our new ordinance regulations and then make sure that they have regular up-to-dates lists of short-term rental properties and agent contacts. So if they're having issues with getting compliance, they can, they can reach out to those agents. And then I'm proposing some very part-time contractual code enforcement. David Jurassic, our day-to-day planner, has a member of his team that does do code enforcement for him already in other townships and other communities. So they have experience, you know, doing this kind of work. And so I see this as supplementing staff somewhat maybe with in-person enforcement. If we, you know, some time coming into the city and maybe doing some more proactive enforcement with making sure that folks do have the, you know, they carry their trash cans, those types of things. But then also have, you know, the capacity to handle, okay, we have an unlicensed rental, doing some of that follow-up, writing those letters, that sort of thing. And certainly staff are still going to be involved with that to a certain extent as well. So I'll get into kind of my proposal for how much time that person would spend, but there'd be kind of a combination approach. Public education and communication, looking at, again, you know, good information on our website. So folks who want to rent know what the regulations are, folks that have concerns and how their concerns can be addressed. Hopefully that'll help on the proactive side of things. And then really through these methods, we have a lot of metrics that we can gather with. You know, how many violations are we seeing, investigating those complaints or the outcome of those complaints, monitoring response times on your 24/7 hotline. And then, you know, I think it'd probably be good for us to touch base with the community, you know, annually to kind of see, you know, hey, how is it going? Because we're going to need to adjust. This is kind of an incremental approach into more enforcement. It's not going to the extreme of full-time separate staff member or full-time separate code enforcement. But, you know, we want to, we want to see how these programs are actually working as well, so we can continually approve. Do you want me to keep going all the way through or do you stop for questions there before I get into the annual license fee as a?
No, I'm, I'm good with you going to the annual license fee and the change of the proposed fee.
Okay. So on the annual license fee front, right now that the current fee is just $350 for a three-year certificate. And so the city does have the ability to charge a fee for its cost of licensing and regulating short-term rentals, as long as we're, you know, looking at our actual costs, not, you know, making this a tax, that's something that, you know, the state legislature is looking at. So we evaluated, essentially the fire department's costs are going to be going up per inspection at $50 additional dollars. So they recently did an analysis of their fees and have determined that the cost of inspection, just in general, is going to be $50 more. So there's some cost. And so I took a look and provided you with a chart essentially that kind of breaks down a combination of staff time spent on processing applications, the fire department inspection, you know, time staffs will spend on code enforcement-related issues and follow-up throughout the year. Some of that part-time code enforcement, the cost of the Granicus third-party. And then we also have legal costs involved with enforcement as well. So Jake and I kind of talked about what that averages out to right now on just basic like inquiries and follow-up with owners' attorneys. But then Jake and I discussed that we could also recoup some of the legal time that was spent on drafting these ordinances themselves, which has been quite significant with them attending task force meetings to gather information and then ultimately drafting the ordinances themselves. And so I've been proposing a, spreading that cost out over a period of time. So it's not as much of a shock factor, but recouping some of those costs. So I'm recommending those costs essentially came to like $529. So give the applicants or the owners the benefit of the doubt. That brings us to a fee, a proposed fee of $525 annually for a license. And then with the inspection fees, re-inspection fees going up, actually a typo on the current fee, it's $100 currently. That would go from $100 to $150 for the re-inspection fee with the, so no extra charge on the city side, just the fire department side. On the fine side of things, you know, we heard it a lot, right, that we, you know, right now you have a zoning certificate to rent a short-term rental unit. And, you know, if you don't have that certificate, what was your fine for first offense?
Hundred dollars.
Well, the cost of the fee was $350. And so, you know, was there really an incentive to, you know, maybe, you know, and now a lot of folks are good folks, want to do the right thing and they are. And they apply and they get their certificate, but there could be some folks out there that aren't doing that. And so with the new ordinance, we had to establish some fine amounts by resolution. And then saw that there's probably an opportunity to update some of the fees as well. So if you're essentially renting a dwelling unit less than 31 days, you know, using it as a short-term rental, you don't have the license. I'm proposing a fee that would start out at basically on triple what the fee, you know, would be if you had supplied and done it. And then it would go up from there. If you exceed the maximum short-term rental occupancy that you're supposed to have, it was that started by a $100 fine. Same if your short-term rental is not compliant with zoning, so say you're not renting it, you know, as a, you know, under a single contract, the entire property, those types of issues, because your licensing ordinance says that your short-term rental still has to comply with zoning. If an agent or the person that's responsible fails to remedy a violation timely like they're supposed to, that would be start at 250. And then there's kind of a catch-all, there's other provisions that are in the ordinance that you're required to follow. We established a fine at 250 for those. And the unlawful noise side of things, right now, a first violation under the city code is a $25 fine. So proposing that that go up to 150, recognizing that there's other unlawful noise issues that could arise that aren't just related to short-term rentals. And then the zoning code recommending an increase in those fines and costs as well. And then, I'm sorry, just on the fine side, I shouldn't say cost because that's a separate term that we're limited in state law on what we can actually recover.
Okay.
And then lastly, on the third-party support, we did issue a request for proposals for that third-party to support. I kind of outlined there what we were ultimately looking for, which I touched on in the enforcement plan. We had, we put it on our website. We also sent it out to three firms that had reached out to us on a regular basis throughout your short-term rental process that were really interested in providing these types of services. One of them said, you know, we're not going to give you a proposal because you're not doing taxes. But Granicus and Avenue both submitted proposals. Granicus came in as the lower-priced option. Avenue was going to charge an upfront fee of an extra $5,000 to get going. And then their fees overall were $2,000 or $3,000 more than Granicus was offering for the other services. Granicus is being used by several other communities, South Haven, Howland, Traverse City, Charlevoix-Potosi, New Buffalo, lots of other similar communities. I did talk with South Haven's Director of Planning about their experience with Granicus and they were happy with the services. And then Granicus is also willing to work with us on a little bit of a longer agreement to kind of lock in some costs at a fairly reasonable 5% increase per year. So that was a lot to say. What are your thoughts? And what defines fees, those are all within your purview to, you know, modify as you see fit, but happy to answer questions.
Any, any discussion, questions, concerns? Go ahead, Holly.
So, you know, looking back at what the task force came up with, this really checks all the boxes, which is great. I mean, I really, because there was a lot of passion around how are we going to get this done? And sort of a last minute, let's, let's encourage in our recommendations that we explore a third-party. So, you know, kudos to you for all of that. I've been on a number of webinars with Granicus and have also, we've had one of their consultants talk us through various approaches to, you know, caps and how that's done. And they've been, their service is phenomenal. So I'm pleased that they came in with a good price. And, you know, having that data, I think, would, will be awesome. So I really support this and thank you, Ryan, for pulling it all together.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that this cost study is good. I think it definitely, I mean, I know that obviously folks that are used to paying $100 a year are not going to love paying $500 a year. But when you look at the cost study, I've done dozens, probably hundreds of cost studies in my role as financial planner and director. But this is actually very favorable to the investors. It does not take a lot of indirect costs. It doesn't take, I mean, when you do a cost study, you usually say, okay, well, our planner does X amount of time and he's office space here and we pay X amount. I mean, this, this is not a fully loaded cost study. This is really some just direct costs for that. And I think that it is more than fair. And until now, the residents and homeowner, well, even just homeowners that aren't renting have been subsidizing the investment activity of this community. High time that we've addressed this. This is really, they are still getting a very good deal at $500 a year for a license. I don't see any reason why this should be, anyone should be anything other than they're happy with this.
Greg?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to thank you for that price breakdown. You know, that really puts things into perspective. And I'm sure it might cost a couple more bucks here or there, you know, people are going to need a little bit of extra service here or there. But I appreciate that it's parallel with our, with the, this new cost adjustment. So it's showing that we're not making any money off this, folks.
Nope.
And so I appreciate that a lot. The last fee, what was it, 325, right? Was that what it was or three?
350 for three years.
For three years.
I mean, that's for three years, right? How long was it that fee? Do you know? Would you know how long it's been at 350 or?
So I believe it's been a couple of years. I believe it's been a full two years at this point.
All right.
Okay.
Was that 250 before that?
Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and again, thank you very much for the analysis. I'm a numbers guy, so I love this stuff. I can't get lost in it. But I agree that the, this is the right approach to contract for the service as opposed to hiring a city employee because then we can make adjustments, we can let go a contractor as opposed to having to go through an employee and all that kind of jazz. Plus, we're hiring Granicus. I don't know much about the other company, Granicus. I've attended a few of their online sessions as well. They know their business. So I have no particular issue with Granicus as a company. They presumably they're going to do a good job based on, we want to get some, it sounds like you've already done kind of an informal reference, but get some formal references from them. Do they, do they actually, can they do the fire inspections if we ask them to be, to make that part of the?
I don't know that Granicus would do that, that type of service.
Okay, I just, I'm curious as how other communities, if they follow the same model that we've adopted to have our fire department do the inspections? Or if they have another, maybe there's a, probably larger cities actually have people on staff to do it, right?
Some cities do. I know, you know, for example, their public safety, I know some folks contract with like SafeBill, who is a very similar service to like Michigan Township Services and they have inspectors, you know, that are offered in that way as well.
Yeah, the last one is the fines. That'll certainly get the community's attention. Those are, that's just the, those are a tremendous increase, like 80, 90% increases over where we are. So I'm a little troubled by that. I think it's important to increase the investment that people have to make if they violate one of our ordinances. Those seem to be a little high to me. I don't know if there was some science behind where we came up with those numbers or kind of what the thought process was there.
So.
Because those don't reflect costs. They're more for, these are punishments essentially.
They are. So it's not a matter of just kind of looking at the cost necessarily to do that. So my initial thinking with the rentals and, and, and renting without a short-term rental license was, okay, what's going to have some teeth to be like, you know, it's got to be more than just the cost of getting the license. And so, you know, I thought three times that amount seemed to be a reasonable amount to look at. We do have some other guidance in your code of ordinances related to like, like your historic district commission. And if, you know, if you're like tearing down a structure that's contributing or something like that without permits, those fines are very similar to these fine amounts. So you're more serious, we mean business type of violations. And I think I've heard that related to short-term rentals. And so, so then I kind of, from my perspective, stepped it down from there as far as, you know, exceeding maximum occupancy and not complying with zoning seems to be the next kind of level of severity. And looking at that level and then kind of taking it down from there from, okay, are you failing to remedy the issue? Kind of that all the others seem to be a step down from there. Unlawful noise, I mean, frankly, I mean, most traffic citations now are between, you know, $100 and $150. So, you know, based on my law enforcement experience, so that seemed to be a more in line with kind of a lot of other, maybe fines and costs out there. And on the zoning side of things, you know, our zoning fees vary from 125 to 500 as a completely new, like single-family dwelling. And so $250 is kind of the all others fee under zoning. And so I said, well, what's kind of a fee that's going to be reasonable and you didn't actually, hopefully not deliberately, but in the cases where it's deliberate, right? Someone just go out and write citation. We try to work with folks and educate folks to the extent we can. It's the repeat violations of the folks that are saying, we're going to continue to do this anyway. Or if it's a repeat offender is when we start writing tickets. So I don't want folks to think that we're just going to, every time we see a violation, go right straight to this, you know, writing tickets. I think my philosophy tends to be like, let's warn and educate and then if we have continued issues, we'll handle it from there.
Yeah, I would agree. The last comment about this, and I had a short-term rental owner that I've known for a long time contact me to ask a question. And the question is, is that not all short-term rentals are created equal. And I, when I first was on the planning commission, when the policy was first given to the planning commission to do a short-term rental study, which they did, is I started to talk about what I think are, there's basically, I see three tiers of short-term rentals in the town of Sagatuck, in the city of Sagatuck. You've got owner occupied, which is essentially renting an ADU or a room or something of that nature. Probably the most low impact of any of our short-term rental owners because they're on the property, they're going to probably be a bit more paying attention to the people that are renting their places and so forth. So I would be that is probably the most least impactful short-term rental type. Tier two would be second homeowners, many of which are around my house. These are people that I've gotten to know. They come to town on a regular basis. They rent their homes out on a short-term rental. But they pay attention to their home a bit more than the third level, which I think should bear more of the cost than the first or second. They're people that have investment in the community. They bought their house. Sometimes they're family homes. They've been here for, you know, generations. They treat their home differently than the person that has come in and bought a house sight unseen, has been marketed to that you can rent this home and generate $90,000 a year in income. Whether that's true or not, that's how they're being marketed. That level of owner, in me, in my mind, should bear most of the cost of these. So I'd like to discuss if there's going to be a thought regarding a tier structure on these fees because I think that, I think that would represent more of the reality of some of the types of rentals that I see in town. And I know some other towns have taken the same approach.
Madam Mayor, back to the, back to the fact that if you look at any, any other STR fine fees in that, around the state in towns like ours, $500 a year is not bad at all. And if people want to get fussy about it, they don't have to get a license. It's $500 a year for a business license. That is, I would, I would love to know what are the businesses you can run for $500 a year? I think that if we're going to, if it's going to be tiered, you know, where it's going to be tiered is when the legislation, if the legislation goes through and you're paying a percentage of your rental income and that's where you're going to have it in the tiers. But something like this to run a business license, we don't say, well, do you think your business is going to make money this year? Or do you think you're not going to lose money? So it's a business license. You're applying for a business license and that, I just think that the fees are already on the low side. The violations, they are, they are high, but the good news is the rules aren't hard to follow. The rules aren't hard to find. You follow the rules, you don't get a violation. I mean, make them $10,000, whatever, just keep it so that people are, have an incentive to follow the rules. And $500 a year for a business license, nobody should squawk at that.
I would, I would have to, sorry, I would have to wonder, you know, if you can differentiate different type of owners legally.
Who's going to, who's going to, and then we had a whole nother layer of. Who's going to, who's going to, and then, then we had a whole nother layer of enforcement.
And well, and the whole point is it's a fee based on the amount of work that needs to be done per short-term rental. And it would be the same. It would be the same for all licenses and inspections and, and everything that goes along with it. It's the same.
So, yeah, so the fees are the same. So you wouldn't be able to like, like charge, I mean, you could certainly as a pilot, from a policy perspective, say, you know, here's our cost, but we're willing to charge somebody who has, you know, owner occupying the home and it's renting the ADU a, a lower cost than our, or what our fees are. I mean, that is a policy decision. Now, we can't like say we're going to make up that, that difference, I don't think with the other. Well, maybe you could. I don't know. That's kind of an interesting question.
I think at a minimum, it would be extraordinarily complicated. Because the, the idea of a, a licensing fee is to offset the city's administrative costs. And so to, to kind of bake that into a, a tiered B schedule, you, you need to have probably some kind of rationale for what those different license types, like what is the, the cost they're incurring to the city?
Right.
Versus just applying it to the, the licensing system as a whole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jake. The, 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 I can just hear some voices already saying, why am I being treated like the person who's bought a home and lives in California, for instance, and hires a, you know, any name, any one of the companies that manage these properties, they're simply trying to churn and burn it to make money off it from an investment standpoint, as opposed to someone who has simply rented out an ADU or perhaps a floor in their home or whatever. It's a completely different, in my mind, it's a completely different concept. And I can just already hear the voices of people saying, why am I paying the same amount for this?
Because you're paying for a license. It's not our job to monitor how much money you're going to make off of it. It's our job to issue a license. If you come in and ask for a license and you fill that out and Ryan goes over, it's the same amount of work if the house is a hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. You're paying for a license. When you go to get your license, they don't check to see how much you make. When you go to get your driver's license, you pay for a driver's license. I pay for a driver's license. If you make a million dollars a year and I make ten dollars a year, we pay the same amount of money for a driver's license. It's the cost that the state charges you to administer it. It's not that complicated.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Baldwin, I would say that there are many examples of municipalities that tier pricing for various reasons.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this? The only question I had is if there's like one, two, three violations, is there a revoking of a license? How does that work?
Right. So your, your updated police powers ordinance doesn't allow for staff to essentially bring forth the city council that, you know, if we're seeing a situation where it's a common violator or it's a really egregious violation, then those are also, that, that's a mechanism absolutely that we would bring to the council.
Okay.
To add to that, I, I don't believe the ordinance necessarily requires a certain number of violations. It's just if there is, you know, enough violations, I guess it is, it is one of the options that the city has in its toolbox to initiate a hearing to suspend or revoke a license that's independent from the authority to assess fines.
Does anything have to be written in to talk about revoking of the license? Do we have anything in there that talks about?
It's already in there.
It's in there.
Yeah, there's a whole process.
But it's not like a one, two, three, there's not. It's just a number of violations have occurred. It comes before council and we decide if it needs to be revoked.
If I recall correctly, there has to, so I think a, a first violation that would be brought before council would result in a, I think it's a three-month suspension. Then the second would be a six-month, and then a third would be permanent revocation, if I'm remembering that correct.
Yeah, I, yeah. Thanks for that reminder. I remember that part. Yeah.
One quick question. So for the violation, so though if they, they rent it without a license, is a violation one instance of doing that? Or is it one night of doing that? Or?
Technically, you can layer on my, I think practically, you know, we would, would probably be issuing a, hey, we realize this, here's your violation.
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that there are provisions in the city code that says each day a violation exists, constitute the, the separate violation. That's pretty commonplace, but to, to Ryan's point, as a practical matter, there aren't a lot of instances where you'd go out and issue a new ticket every day unless, yeah, relations had really broken down with the defendant.
Okay, great. Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to item six F, page one oh.
I just, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. You're going to the next one. Just for, just so you understand for Monday's purposes, I, I present in bringing forth essentially the probably a resolution to update your, your fee schedule with this proposed fee, and then approval of Granicus as the third-party support.
Okay.
And then the fees, the fine amounts, those are going to have to be in the form of a resolution or an ordinance. So that's going to take probably a couple more weeks to put that part together.
Okay.
To bring to you.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on that one. All right, moving on to item six F then, that's on page one oh two. Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and so the firm of Burnett and Castron for, for many years has represented the city with back to the days of the Sagatuck Douglas Police Department. And a lot of cities have certain more traditional criminal violations, maybe as like a city code violation. And so sometimes cities with rights like, you know, domestic violence or OWI under a, a, a city as a city code violation. And then in, in those cases where that occurs, then, well, the city has to prosecute it. And so the city had a relationship sort of Douglas with, with this firm to do that. They also represented the, the previous officers with Michigan Uniform Traffic Code violation. So you fight your, your speeding tickets and, and take it to a formal hearing, then this firm would represent the, the officers. And so they don't do much representation for our current deputies. Our deputies are writing things under state law, so the prosecutor's office is handling things. But there are occasions when maybe a traffic citation still goes to a formal hearing, or there's some historical criminal expungement requests that are coming in on old city cases that this firm has been handling as well. As Peter said, the, I mean, the, the charges are very minimal, like maybe a thousand to two thousand dollars a year that were still. So they had asked for kind of an updated agreement back, you know, a while back. And, and so just kind of cleaning this one up essentially to continue their services.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is the first I've ever heard Burnett and Castron in my time with the city. So they obviously are not, there's not a lot of activity there. What, what, what this brings to mind is that when I did my ride-along with the police last summer, something I learned was that the police have an option to write a ticket for a civil infraction for a parking ticket, for instance. They could write it under a county ordinance or they could write it under the local city ordinance. And my question was, what's, what's the difference? And basically the one is, is that if they write it under the city ordinance, it's less fees. And then the city has a responsibility for enforcing that and collecting it. As if they write it under the county, all of the city, pardon me, all of the county services support that, support that ticket. So if the perpetrator decides not to pay it, then they have the prosecutor, you know, go through that process. So the reason I bring this up is is that something maybe the city should be talking about is to remove that option to write a, since we're contracting with the county for those services anyway, is to not even write tickets under the local ordinance and just have it all counties because then they pay for everything in court and everything else that would go along with it. And I'm probably not explaining that clearly enough, but that was kind of my understanding of how it works. It was kind of interesting.
So I guess maybe that following all, all the different distinctions. So, yeah, I mean, if you're writing it under a city code, then yes, there's responsibilities the city has and, and defending that. But not everything in a city code is necessarily in a, you know, and maybe counties are limited on ordinances anyway. But even as, not everything in a city code is necessarily in a, a state law or something like that could be written, you know, on that side of things anyway. So certainly, yeah, if it's, if it's written under a state law or some other entities code, then there's sharing of the fines that, that are imposed. I, I, I think the prosecutor's office, though my understanding here in Allen County doesn't defend our deputies as it relates to even Michigan's uniform traffic citations. So even if our officers are writing it under like the, the state code, then versus a, a local speeding ordinance or something like that, they still need some defense in that regard. And so that, that was my understanding when I talked with Captain Ennsfield about some of the distinctions and, and his feeling that there still was value to having this representation.
So a, a suggestion, maybe we have Deputy Ben Haas, who is the new Brett Ennsfield. Come and talk to us about that, just at least maybe what the options are. Just, it, it seemed to me to be a pretty interesting situation. So maybe we have Deputy Haas come in at, at a future point, kind of explain to us how it works. And maybe there's an opportunity here, maybe there's not. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you. If you want to push this to a, a second work session and hear from Sergeant Haas, if he's available, I certainly can, certainly can do that.
Oh, it's good to see the officers come in and talk to us. So this is a suggestion.
How, how much do we typically spend in a year on this service?
I mean, Peter told me it's like a thousand, like two thousand at the most that, that comes up.
In a year?
Any.
I am not in favor of pushing this. Just let's approve it.
Yeah. Councilmember Baldwin, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just asking about maybe there's another opportunity to have further discussion about maybe the way the city is doing its operations from a policing standpoint. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I mean, I can vote on this.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Well, then we'll move on then to item six G, Blue Star Trail. It's on page one oh five. This is an update on the trust fund grant.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you know, so we, the, the city was successful with its, well, you previously passed a resolution authorizing the, the submission of a DNR trust fund grant to fund some of the construction costs related to the Blue Star Non-Motorized Trail. The city was successful with that application, which was, you know, a big, big hooray. So essentially, as, as part of having that, that grant awarded to us, the state said, well, here's our, our grant agreement that you have to agree to. And so they need a signature as well as an approval from you as a body to, to accept the grant.
That sounds great. We'll accept it. Anyone, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Logan. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ryan. I think we're good with that one. Then moving on to, and you've been so patient. Alec and Lindsay, we're.
Always are.
They so are so patient. We're on to item six H, having to do with Six Fifty Water Street. And Ryan, if you could explain what's going on there?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Alec and Lindsay have been working hard on their, their plans for their, their new restaurant at Six Fifty Water Street, they, they have been working through the, the plans for the new ventilation and have discovered, you know, that, that there's some additional things that are going to be involved with that. But when they got past their initial zoning approvals, and so they've kind of developed a couple of different options, I understand, related to this, this kitchen ventilation. And they could do ground equipment. If they do ground equipment, there's a lot of zoning regulations that are triggered related to screening, the types of screening that you can have within, you know, most of the waterfronts, and then how far the, the equipment and the screening has to be from the waterfront, as well as this particular property is built off to the property line, so it encroaches into the right-of-way. So they looked at another option where some of the equipment would go on top of the roof and then have kind of a chimney along the side of the building and negate the need for equipment on the ground and, and some of the screening on the ground. So either way, there's variances that are needed or there's less variances that are needed for the, the chimney and, and roof approach. So they're going to be going for the ZBA on the, the twenty-eighth on that, to see if the ZBA is willing to grant them variances for that. Historic District Commission, I talked with the chair, they'll next month be taking a, a look at the, these, well, their proposed plan, which is really the second one here, their proposed chimney plan. But I, we'll offer them the opportunity to also come before council because you're going to ultimately have to approve any encroachment into the right-of-way to see if, you know, you had any heartburn at this point with the option that, that they're going with. I mean, nothing is necessarily binding today. I mean, we're not here to approve an agreement or anything like that for it to encroach. And ultimately, the city's ZBA isn't bound by your decision or, or comments today. And neither is the Historic District Commission, but just wanted to give them opportunity to, so.
Yeah. So feel free to come on up. I, I will just say that the proposed hood chimney seems like the better option instead of having the fencing that kind of,
Thank you.
you know, as far as the view shed, it's a much better option, if you ask me. It'll have to go through ZBA historic, but we wanted to get that preliminary feedback from all of you because it eventually ends up on our lap. And, you know, if you guys are completely opposed to this, we have to not waste their time. How about that? Hi. Thanks for being here and your patience.
Yeah, of course. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you so much. Good to see you again. Again, Alec and Lindsay Paylightner. I gave you the sheet additionally that I, I showed you here just to give a little more of an idea of what we're asking, particularly from you. So, yeah, we, we also agree that the, the chimney method is, is better. We've been working hard with our contractors. Essentially what this is, when you, when you have a restaurant, you got to put in a hood system. And so that needs to go somewhere. And on this particular sheet that I handed, if you look at the dark black line, that's the, that's the, the property line. And this is the important thing that we're trying to get at here is like, that's the property line. So anything outside that property line is yours. And so you can see even the building, like the corner of the building there kind of comes out a little bit into it. And so with the, with the proposed chimney, it's not, it comes out two feet. It's two feet by four feet, not much bigger than, than what this, this podium would be. We would match the facade to match the outside of the building. You can see the electric box moves over as well in that top right picture. You can see how that electric box moves over and the chimney goes right between those windows. The facade would match the outside of the building, same color and material. And then the equipment would live on the roof. Not pictured there is some sort of fencing around that. That would be a Historic District Commission issued to tackle with them. Couple of things to, to be clear, when we talked to the Historical District, they initially, we, we weighed both these options, right? We weighed the equipment on the roof option and the ground equipment option. They leaned towards, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, you were there, but they leaned towards the ground equipment. I, we're going to go and talk to them again. After all these revelations, I have to imagine that at this point, probably the chimney option is going to be a, a better solution. But we are working hard at it and we, we have no interest but to make this good-looking, make it, you know, cost-effective, obviously, make it simple. And, you know, this is, this is our business and we want people to view it in a, in a positive manner. And also, again, this initial expand, this was originally supposed to be an expanded outdoor dining situation out here. But after review with the Historic District Commission and some concerns there, we decided to pull that all back. So now simply what we're asking for is just eight square feet of, of your city space.
Go ahead, Craig.
I just want to give you an A plus for being perfectly prepared with this and with your graphics, even a detail of, of making the fencing a little transparent enough to see what's really back there right now. But you write on, on the graphics and I really appreciate that.
Anyone?
I'm absolutely in favor of approving this. No questions. It looks great. It, it's, it's not cumbersome. It doesn't stick out even as far as the condenser that's out there already. It's not going to be in the way of anybody walking or it's not going to promote something to be hiding underneath it or, you know, otherwise any, you know, any kind of vermin or whatever. I think it looks great. I have no doubt, no questions and totally on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I was at the Historic District Commission meeting where we had that long conversation. It was very productive and I appreciate your willingness to, you know, make adjustments to your plan. And look forward to seeing this after it goes back to ZBA and as well as it goes through the Historic District Commission. Thank you.
All right. Scott?
Just thrilled you're staying in town and breathing new life into that building. So thanks.
Absolutely. Logan?
It doesn't look like the chimney even would be visible except for from an angle because there's even more buildings protruding in front of that. So I appreciate the attention to the street skate there. Cause that's a, that's a really nice part of town.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yeah, it looks like a great option. Thank you again. Thanks, everybody. Okay. So then we are, yes.
Mayor, before you go into, well, I guess you've got.
We have right-of-way applications still.
Yeah, yeah. Just if I could be excused briefly, about five minutes to six, I can be back for closed session within about 10 minutes. I just had to pick up my daughter for dance. So if I could come back for closed session, I might miss some of public comment, but let's carry on.
Okay, that sounds great. All right. So moving on to six I, right-of-way application. It's on page one twenty. Ryan?
Let me turn this over to our clerk. She's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie.
Yep.
Anne Hayes applied for a banner to be placed between April seventeenth and May first for a celebration of retirement for Phyllis Seif that will be on May first.
Okay. Anyone have any, anyone opposed to that?
We've got my full support.
Okay.
Yeah, that is nice. They also, and I, you know, I, I wonder, you know, maybe we should have done something, but she was recognized with the cities. I, I don't know if we want to think about that, giving her a certificate of recognition that we've done in the past. But she's done a great job with the inner urban and she's just a great community gal.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if we might want to consider giving her a.
Yeah, so beyond the pallet sign as well, we could do a resolution of some sort that where we could do that and have her here and, you know, do that for her. Is that something we would all be on?
Not an STR night.
Yes. I know. Yeah. I, I will find out how, what's that?
Proclamation?
A proclamation. That's what I meant, not a resolution, a proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. That would be nice. Yeah.
So this is sort of a, an open event. I guess my, my only question would be, are we creating a precedent for other celebrations for individuals in the community? It doesn't seem like it. Looks like this is going to be a celebration, May first, that anybody could attend. Is that correct? Okay. But I don't think we have any risk of creating a precedent for, you know, I mean. But I don't think we have any risk of creating a precedent for, you know, I mean, we, we all like to see our birthday.
At Phil's.
Birthday up at Phil's, so yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure we're, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Doing a proclamation for my birthday.
So, you know, perhaps, just so we can look at it timing-wise, if we did the proclamation prior to that sign going up?
Yeah.
So we have a little bit of time?
I, I, I kind of thought before, not during that event.
That would be great.
Sometime before.
I'll take a look at the, uh, schedule as far as our, um, our meetings, and then we can figure out a time that, that would, that would be nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, we are on to, uh, public comment. Uh, anyone in the room like to public comment? Okay, anyone online wishing to comment publicly?
Looks like Jane's already talking.
Okay.
Jane, unmute please.
I, no, Greg, if Greg could?
Oh, hey, um, everyone. I just bef, um, I love the idea of the grammaticist, but have you reached out?
Excuse me, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yep, sorry, Greg Hour, um, five forty-eight Hoffman. Um, have you reached out to the platforms themselves? Meaning Airbnb, because I know a lot of the features, Ryan, that you were talking about are fully through the platform and through Airbnb, and where they actually notify the hosts, as well as you can go to Airbnb as a city and mandate that you have to have a city license before your listing goes public, and if you don't, your listing is pulled down. So again, just something to think about, because I know the platforms are building all this in, because it's not just our community that has issues, other communities obviously are doing it, hence why Airbnb and VRBO are having the, putting these as, as a part of the platform. So if, if it saves you guys money, just something to look at.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else with their hand raised?
RW?
RW, if you could, um, unmute yourself, introduce yourself, first and last name, and where you live.
Richard Williams, ten fifty Elizabeth Street, Sagatuck City. I have a comment about the city incurring additional expenses regarding the third-party service. The cost in the study won't be recouped through the fees until at least after three years, because the new fee structure is only upon renewal or new certificates. So this is an additional expense for the city taxpayers, and that's a concern that along with other expenses related to this, between the zoning consultant and the lawyer fees and all that, this is an additional expense for the city taxpayers. And also, with the fee structure in place, do those violation fees also apply to other non-STRs in the city? Because that's where I have most problems with, is just regular residents violating those rules that you have these high fees for. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Anyone else with their hand raised? Okay, all right, that closes public comment. And at this time, if, um, I could take a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Helen.
Moved to move into a closed session pursuant to MCL one-five dot two-six-eight E and H to discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding ongoing lawsuits filed against the city by Dunridge, captioned Dunridge v. City of Sagatuck, case number two-two dash six-five-seven-one-three dash C K, and Dunridge v. City of Sagatuck, case number two-one dash six-four-seven-zero-nine dash C Z, regarding trial or settlement strategy, which, if discussed in an open meeting, would have a detrimental financial effect.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Um, I will take Muncie on the second. Um, and this is a roll call.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean? Sorry, Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And at this time, if we could take a five-minute break, um, we will let All right, and then if I could have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to accept the city attorney's recommendation relative to, to the litigation pending in Dunridge versus City of Sagatuck, case number twenty-one dash six-four-seven-zero-nine dash C Z.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Who was that second?
Uh, Ha, Baldwin.
Okay, uh, Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to the second motion. No?
I think that's it.
Okay.
You don't need a second motion.
Okay. Um, okay, then we are on to, uh, we have correspondence there, if you all have had an opportunity to read through all of those. So it leads us to, uh, council comments. If I could start with Holly, please.
Uh, nothing for me.
Uh, one item I would have is the Historic District Commission meets tomorrow evening, and I would ask that council begin to think about goals and objectives for policy um, directions for the Historic District Commission. We're gonna be talking about this tomorrow night, and, uh, we would seek feedback from our legislative body on policies around Historic District Commission, they might be interested in having us tackle this year. Thank you.
Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, Scott?
No comment, Mayor.
All right, Gregory?
Uh, a week from today, come learn how to make a terrarium at Wicks Park Bar and Grill, where Jean and I, from Back to the Fuchsia, will be, uh, demonstrating, educating, and having fun with terrariums for only fifty dollars. So check us out, go check out our, uh, uh, Facebook pages, but we're looking forward to a fun time.
Fun.
Thank you, Logan.
Can't follow that, no comment.
All right, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Do you need to keep these here?